The structure of board's committee meetings will have a presentation followed by board discussion. Upon completion of board discussion, any citizens in attendance will have an opportunity for comment. The chair now recognizes Mr. Steve Morve, Chairperson of Finance Committee, to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the call to order for the Finance Committee meeting of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I guess I will turn that over to Mr. Berlin for his initial comments, and then I assume Vicky Bendig may have some presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Morve. So we're going to go through highlights of a very preliminary budget where we think things are right now. They could change. The revenue picture, as you know, isn't always settled before the state budget is settled. So Mrs. Bendig will go through that. This is all built on the assumption that we're going to get at least what we were awarded last year, including the increased funds that the Department of Ed had distributed after the budget was passed in July of two thousand and twenty-two. So I will turn things over to Mrs. Bendig.
You can talk for another minute. Make something.
What's your business?
Why don't you address the audience? Tell them to keep it down and stop being so unruly.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Okay, so. We're just waiting on the executive summary as well. But so initial financial projections and usually I start out with the budget amount that we had last year, and then I adjust salaries and adjust whatever we get increased to real estate taxes due to. So whatever we get in real estate taxes due to assessment increases. So people do additions, there's new buildings. We did a real estate appeal, so we have some more increase in revenue. And this number is as it is as of like a month ago. I will call them on May first and get an updated number because it can change for so that we have a closer number as well. But the increase to real estate taxes due to the assessment increases is about seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then the increase to the basic ed funding, special ed, social security, retirement, and the federal amounts from last year to this year is about seven hundred and thirteen thousand. And then the increase to expenditures, which is salaries, benefits, increase to transportation, those kinds of things is about one point two million dollars, which gives us a preliminary budget deficit of four hundred and fourteen thousand. So assumptions with the budget, we're going to maintain and enhance all programming. We've adjusted the basic ed funding subsidy to be what last year's amount was. So last year's amount, we didn't actually realize in our budget because their budget was so late, it wasn't, we didn't have time. So we had used the previous year's number for last year. So now we're going to say, well, we'll at least get what we got last year. So that's been increased. Federal programming and transportation, special ed have been, are flat funded at last year's amount. We still have the Ready to Learn Educational Grant. And just to mention, the Act One allowable increase is five point six percent this year, and that would generate six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in revenue. Some things to mention about the expenditure increases. The salary increases are currently estimated at an additional four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. This does reflect three anticipated retired teacher retirements and the addition of an autistic support teacher at the elementary center and two aides to staff that classroom. Because we are adding the autistic support classroom here, we will be bringing back four of our students that are currently being educated in other districts, which will reduce a hundred thousand dollars in special ed tuition to other districts, which will help fund the teacher and the aides that are in that classroom.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bendig, could you remind us when you say reflect anticipated retirement of three teachers, does that mean that you're anticipating replacing those positions at a lesser cost or not replacing those positions at all?
The former. They will be replaced at a lesser cost.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question? In everything you're going through here with the budget highlights, this is, this is what gets us to the adjusted expenditures of the deficit of the one point two?
Four, four fourteen.
Four hundred and fourteen.
Exact deficit.
I understand. Okay.
Yes, Leo.
Because we're back.
When you're talking about the autistic class, when we saw the presentation, she said it's full. Is it with incoming kindergarten? It would be in addition?
It would be incoming kindergarteners as well as the students that Mrs. Bendig referred to that we're bringing back from other programs and other districts.
So there's like four or five autistic support kindergarteners coming in and in addition, these four that are out of the district coming back.
Correct. The class is full at eight students, right?
Right. Okay.
Medical insurance rates are projected to increase at eight percent, which is about four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The new employer rate for Piersers this year is thirty-four percent. It was thirty-five point two six percent last year. This is the first time in all of the time that I can remember that it actually went down, which doesn't make sense because it's currently not being funded at the correct rate. So I'm not sure what their thought process was, but.
I had sent out. I had sent out an explanation on that. This is a, it was a one-time reprieve. This was an unusual banking maneuver. But it slated, yeah, it was, it was maybe a month or so ago and it was in the update, but it slated to
Well, and they've already issued their. They've already issued their projections for next year, and it's back up above thirty-five point two six percent. And I think in the next six years, it will be up to forty percent. So we have that to look forward to. So estimated increase with the new, with increase in salaries and positions, that's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the transportation contract increase at two and a half percent is about forty-six thousand. We'll be continuing to fund curriculum at two hundred and fifty thousand. We have technology initiatives, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar technology plan, which is district-wide laptop replacement leases, currently about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from, which is increased from last year. All the teachers and staff will be getting new computers in the fall because their leases up and to replace those computers with machines that will help with their presentation and presenting curriculum and having so much stuff online. They needed a better machine, so it is a little bit more money. And then additional technology needs about two hundred and twenty thousand, which is the same as it has been for a while.
What does that include?
So anything that they need to purchase for the technology program, wires, cords, if we have to replace backup batteries for the servers, server closet servers, any.
Business as usual bucket.
Yep.
Right, and that might, it might include, you know, subcontracting a specialty service if there's a particular issue that requires.
Run the business.
More, right, yeah.
And all of our software programs that, you know, the firewall, all of the stuff that runs IT in the background.
What, yeah, one programming note, ESER funds are starting to drop off with this budget. And we had put additional mental health supports into the middle school and the high school in the form of the refocused rooms, which is really, it's a mental health specialist in each building to provide support for students that need it. We, we, right now, we want to continue that, and that's in this budget. But the funding for it is on us now. It's no longer funded by the ESER COVID American Reinvestment Act.
I didn't put that on my list.
I just realized it now looking.
So for maintenance, about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintenance plan, which includes waterproofing and repointing for twenty thousand dollars, our HVAC and building control maintenance agreement with Stark Tech for ninety-five thousand dollars, the sewage treatment plan expenses about forty-two, five, PM inspections on generators, district vehicles, pest controls, fire, fire inspections, bleacher inspections. All of those things are included in that. And then the generational cleaning equipment so that we can keep up on replacing those on a cyclical basis, seventy-five hundred dollars. Budgetary reserve is set at one point five million dollars. That's about nine hundred thousand for charter school tuition and then six hundred and thirty thousand for the budgetary reserve and operating contingency. As I mentioned before, the maximum allowable Act One index at five point six percent would be an additional a hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-four cents on a tax bill for a home that is assessed at a hundred thousand, which generates six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue. Six-year average real estate tax increase looking over the last six years. Remember, we had a year where we had no tax increase, but prior to that, we had been above or at the max limit is about three point three nine percent. If we did a tax increase of three point three nine percent, it increases real estate taxes on a hundred thousand dollar home at about seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. And then if we look at the financial projection, this is my, this is just a snapshot of my spreadsheet that I use to keep everything in. And I apologize, but I don't have, this medical increase is six point seven seven percent. I think there's eight percent in the budget. That's the new projection. And you can see that the local revenue, this local revenue percentage number that's in green right underneath the revenue, that's a percentage of how much it went up from the previous year. So we went up about not quite one percent this past year. And at the bottom, this shows total revenue increased by seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, and it's where the expenditures increased by one point two million. If we go to the next page, this shows the revenue by category where each increase happens. So an increase in the total taxable assessment, seventy-seven thousand. At this point, I didn't, did not include any increase to property tax, but knowing that we will need to in order to close the deficit. Increase to basic instructional subsidy is about five hundred and twelve thousand. Increase to social security is twenty-two thousand. Rental reimbursement, which is our debt service. We actually, because our payment has stayed about the same, we get a percentage back on some of what we pay. So that goes up eleven thousand. Increase to special ed subsidy, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's to match what we got last year. And then we had an increase to Title One, a decrease in Title Two, a decrease to special access Medicaid. We have been overestimating our revenues on those in the past, so I kind of right-sized that more this year. So total revenue increase of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. And then off to the right-hand side is the list of by category, how much the increase and decrease is. So increase in salaries, four hundred and forty-six thousand. Increase to benefits, two hundred and ninety-two. Increase in instructional expenses, a hundred and forty-one. Decrease to special ed, a decrease to tech school because our three-year average has gone down a little bit and anticipating less students going. And that's how they base our portion that we pay. Increase to technology expenses, thirty-seven thousand. That was the lease payment that I mentioned. Maintenance expenses, transportation expenses, and an increase to budgetary reserve to help cover some of the charges to school tuition. So that's just another way of showing you where I got to the four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar deficit. And then on the last page, this is a budget snapshot that is by each individual object code. So all the object codes that are in the one hundreds are salaries, and they're split up by administration, teachers, teacher long substitute substitutes, teacher extra duty, technology, secretaries, game help, housekeeping, and athletics. And then all of the benefits are in the two hundreds. The purchased professional services, those are in the three hundreds. All of those are listed there by category. Four hundred is purchased property services like cleaning, laundry, all of the maintenance repairs that, all of the services that we have to pay other people to do that we don't do in-house. And then five hundred is purchased other services such as transportation, insurance, communications, advertising, and tuitions to other schools. And then the six hundreds are the supplies and technology supplies, including gasoline and diesel fuel, capitalized equipment dues and fees, and then debt services in the nine hundreds. That was really all I had about the budget. I mean, we did talk about some of the things that increased or decreased kind of as a broad overview. I don't know if any of you have questions or.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. President?
Dr. Pushak?
Just a fun fact, if we didn't have our charter school bill of nearly a million dollars, we'd be able to close our revenue gap pretty quick.
I had a question on the back of that comment. Do we know about how many students are in our charter school?
I know last, well.
Well, too, it's, these are private cyber charters. There's fourteen of them in Pennsylvania, and we don't have any say. I've been on my soapbox about that before. These families choose to go, they advertise that it's free, well, it's not free. It's a shadow secondary public school system in Pennsylvania that's being funded by local taxpayers. And then there's our cyber program. And Becca, I think, knows the numbers better than I do. But, you know, we had really ramped that capacity up for COVID. And we had initially, boy, over a hundred fifty, maybe a hundred seventy-five-ish students in there. And then they matriculated back slowly, and we don't have very many students in there. We've, we've conducted campaigns. We've had principals drive to the homes of students that are in the private cyber saying, hey, we have similar programs right here. You know, we'd love to have you back. And that nets us maybe ten or fifteen students. And then we get new students in the front door, students graduate, and then those gains dissipate, so.
I don't have an exact number of students, but I think I would estimate between forty-five and fifty-five students.
Why did they choose that? Why did they choose to go to cyber, like the charter schools and not us, I guess? Do we, do we have that data?
Yes, I've looked at that many times. We've looked at those students and I can't talk in specifics, but a lot of times it's students that haven't been successful here despite a lot of efforts. You know, we've, we've tried to help them with truancy, not coming to school, chronic truancy. These are students that we've repeatedly reached out to with interventions of all types that we have, mental health and special ed, students that are in a lot of disciplinary, have a lot of disciplinary infractions. That's typically who goes there.
I'll say you also have a group of families who believe in, say, traditional homeschooling for religious reasons or social reasons. And because of that now have adopted the cyber programs because it gives them that curriculum without having to fill out the paperwork and things through the public school code that they'd be required to fill out. And the kids are still home.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's the other big. So these, I mean, these really are students that are hard to recapture for the five or six reasons I just outlined.
Parents have their reasons, and you're probably not going to change their mind.
Yeah, because we've tried, we've tried all types of, I mean, the most recent was like door-to-door visits over the summer and.
Does the nine hundred thousand that we're projecting for charter include both those buckets? You're talking about the private charter and our own charter?
It's just.
Just the private.
Okay. It's just those fifty-five students.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and that, and those numbers, you know, as, as, it's based off of our budget. So as our budget grows, the PDE's tuition calculation for those students grow. And this is escalating across the state. I just read an article last week that we've, Pennsylvanians paid one billion dollars to cyber charter schools, one billion. And that's come out of local school district pockets directly. So, you know, talk about inefficiencies, you're, you're operating to public school system. So every time you do that, you're duplicating administration, counselors, you know, right down the line, even though there's not as many brick and mortar costs, there's still personnel costs. But not equivalent with what we deal with when it comes to transportation and buildings and all those types of things. And, I mean, I, I could give a whole presentation on this, I've written articles about it. The executives that run these organizations are pocketing millions and millions and millions of dollars. Many of them have been caught up in fraud. Nick Trombetta, PA Cyber's largest. It's Pennsylvania's largest private cyber. I mean, he's in jail now because he had three yachts, multiple mansions. I mean, it's just, it is really a direct taxpayer theft siphon system in plain public view. And the assessment system in Pennsylvania shows that all those, all fourteen of those schools continue to turn in the lowest. Not kind of low or a little bit low, the lowest performance of any school.
When you said like a lot of these kids are truant or they're struggling in school, they're not going to be successful in cyber school if they're not successful in.
Yeah.
In versus school.
And, and I, and I, and I've made this point, like, you know, last May when I went on my visit to the Capitol and we got to lobby quite a few senators and House members. I mean, I've made these points, you know, these, these programs are picking, they're, they're really allowing students with, with high levels of challenges to walk away from, you know, buildings and programs and people like we have here that can direct, accountability can directly help them be successful. But, and again, I don't want to go too far, I'll, I'll leave it at this. There's an unbelievable amount of lobby money in groups in favor of the private cybers. Jeffrey Yoss is the richest person in Pennsylvania. There's fifty of them named, one in every state, he's PAs. And the amount of money that he's put into the backside of campaigns for Pennsylvania legislators, you know, in the PA Assembly that backs cyber charters is staggering. And I can, maybe I've shared those articles, I, I have them all earmarked, I can send it on again, but. You know, so there's, there's a lot of forces there that are beyond our control. I don't see that going away.
Ms. Bendig, I had a couple of questions. The Act One index limits, I was like five point three or?
Five point six.
Five point six. And do you know how they calculate that? Is like inflation a part of that?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, and actually, our index is adjusted. So each school district, there is an index, and then there's an adjustment based on your ability to. I don't exactly know what it's all based on, but I think it is your ability to raise taxes, the percentage of local versus state funding. So our Act One maximum increase is actually greater than the index that they set. We get an adjustment. So some school districts get a a reduction as an adjustment. So, you know, there might be four point four percent, but they're only allowed to do three point eight, depending on whatever their ability is, so.
That formula also takes into account per cavity income. So the better off districts end up receiving a less of an ability.
What did we, what did we do last year?
The last, last year's increase was three point six four percent.
Which was below the index, or was it Act Index four or one or something?
I think it was four point one.
Right, right, a little bit below. Did we get any, in your, in your assessment of additional revenue, you talked about assessment values going up. Do we get any, you talked about our assessment challenges that we can now do? Do we have any, is that really reaping any revenue?
So I believe that the seventy-seven thousand dollars that we're getting, that shows up, our total taxable assessment last year at the time of the budget was five hundred and ninety-two million. Now it's five hundred and ninety-six million. So the assessment appeals that we went after would have increased the assessed value of those homes, which is probably part of this seventy-seven thousand dollars that we're getting right off the top before we raise taxes.
Right, right. Okay. Are we self-insured on insurance?
We are.
So the eight percent is sort of our own usage rate? Okay.
They do a weighted three-year lookback average. There's some formula that our broker uses to help us figure out how much we should raise. And again, if we get to a point where we're paying in greater amounts than what our claims are, we can always petition the Nova Trust to have a funding holiday. So we could give up, you know, take one month and not make a payment. But our insurance payments are right around two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a month. That's what the percentage is.
You talked about increases that we know, like our transportation increases. Was, was in that, the nutrition group, so we assuming, we're voting on it, I know this month, but is there assumption of an increase?
So there is an assumption of an increase, but it is a separate fund and it is not part of the general fund budget.
Okay, okay. I don't know if anybody else, I had a couple more questions, they can wait or I can email you about them. But I know we're running close to seven, so I want to make sure, did anybody else have any questions?
I have some comments, but we don't have time.
Yeah, probably.
Your comments, we don't have time.
We don't.
All right, all right, why don't we wait?
We should have started at six.
Sure, sure, yeah. We can do, yeah, we can do it in our finance section of the, of the board. Well, thank you, Ms. Bendig, for the initial overview, and Mr. Berlin. At this point, we'll recess until our regular scheduled board meeting at seven in about thirty seconds. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wattsburg area school district. We are student-centered and future-focused for world-class education. The board work session of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now called order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Spurlingham, here. Mrs. Farrell, here. Mrs. Heatherington, here. Mrs. Lee, here. Mr. Matson, here. Mr. Morve, here. Mrs. Burlingham, here, Mrs. Farrell, here, Mrs. Heatherington, here, Mrs. Lee, here, Mr. Matson, here, Mr. Morve, here, Mrs. Pound, here, Dr. Bushcheck, here, Mr. Blazer.
President, thank you, the chair recognizes superintendent of schools, Dr. Ken Berlin for school reports.
Well, we'll have a school report next week, Mr. President.
Thank you, next item on the agenda is guest and citizen comments, we haven't had anyone sign up to speak today. The chair recognizes Dr. Ken Berlin for superintendent's report.
Uh I don't have a report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, chair recognizes Mrs. Dicky Bendig, the biz administrator for her financial report, this is.
Uh for this evening, uh the treasures report, general fund treasures report as of. March thirty first, ten million, four hundred eighty two thousand, thirty nine dollars and twenty eight cents. Capital projects has four hundred ninety three thousand, eight hundred seventy five dollars and seven cents in those accounts. As of March thirty first, and cafeteria balance as of March thirty first, five hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred sixty eight dollars even. Checks written between the last board meeting and this evening for. General fund, eighty thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars and thirty nine cents. Cafeteria checks written since the last board meeting totaling eight hundred seventy nine thousand and fifteen cents. And the Seneca High School Activity Fund um balance as of. It's March thirty first is eighty five thousand, four hundred seventy nine dollars and eleven cents in those accounts. I will have uh budget versus actual and the cafeteria profit and loss and the other bill list for next week.
Thank you, are there any questions from the board from Mrs. Bendig regarding her reports? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration, thank you, Ms. Bendig. Uh there's one item on the agenda under legal advisement, it's LA one, uh it's our ARP Ester Health and Safety Plan by annual review. Is there any questions or discussions on that item under legal advisement?
Mr. President, in general, it seems like we just we kept it pretty static, right, we didn't change much of anything, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same, I I did go on to the CDC website, uh they have a feature where you can search for educational guidance updates. And there's been none since last August when.
I'm fine with that.
When they loosened up, um we do, so our plan is, it I mean, it's minimal, it's just recommended if you're sick, that type of thing uh for mitigation. We do have to review this biannually as a condition of receiving several million dollars over. Three, four year period for um that federal funding grant related to COVID.
Hearing no other questions, that item will be on our agenda next week for your consideration, the chair recognizes Mr. Steve Morve for finance.
Mr. President, currently, there are two items under finance, uh the first one is item uh F one, which is uh budgetary transfers. So the normal monthly budgetary transfer from budget to actual, as well as uh unassigned fund to balance fifty thousand dollars for the wrestling mats, wrestling mats. And transfer from unassigned to committed, one hundred and sixty two thousand for paving and concrete projects. As well as then F two, which is the nutrition group for food services agreement, that is the renewal agreement for the next school year, twenty three, twenty four school year for the nutrition group. Currently, those are the two items we have, Mr. President, under finance.
Thank you, are there any questions or discussion on the two items under finance as well as any carryover conversation from our finance committee meeting?
I do have a question, on the uh paving and concrete projects, does that include anything up by concession? Cuz I know there was a issue on that, it was unlevel.
If we haven't gotten any bids or quotes or anything for paving, this is just making sure that we have enough money cyclically to have that, so it will be identified.
Got it.
At a later time.
There were a couple salute, when that incident happened, um when somebody tripped. Eric Schultz did identify a couple solutions, so that's, I mean, that's on our list. And hopefully we'll be able to take care of it, I I did wanna, I have a comment about assigning those funds. We you know, we knew from the local audit report that we had in February. That we had some uncommitted funds that needed to be committed, about two hundred thousand dollars. Originally. We, the athletic department had come to us and said, you know, the discus shot put area is a swamp. It is a sw- it's literally a swamp, it's a wetland, so we did have Keystone put together. A plan to address that area, to to make it drier, uh sooner, more usable, you know, put in some some new launch pads and things. And we also asked them to look at a batting tunnel for baseball, softball. Because we know that that has been a concern coming from the athletic department. There is. There's some parents from the baseball team and I, some money that was spent out of the boosters to start. A batting cage up there. Which, you know, if you hang the net right now, there's power up there, you can put, I mean, it's it is functional. They had come to us early in the budget process this year. The athletic director and the baseball coach and stuff had had said, look, uh the balls, we we need a better surface up there, they wanted some turf. Because some of the balls were getting marked and dinged and damaged on the compacted cinders that we put up there to give them a solid surface. Well, the they had went out and got some prices, but it didn't include installation. I I mean, it just looked like things that, you know, that they had found some possible solutions, but. We know what we put in up there and the drainage systems, so with that, if we're gonna do this, let's at least get a price. So we know what it costs to do it correctly and not end up with, you know, a piece of turf laying on some muddy. Wetland.
Sub- substrate.
Right, you know, so so that that quote came back fairly high, so that and. We headed down that road too, be to back up because we knew we had some money to commit, so we're thinking maybe we could take care of it out of that. The price for both of those projects, which which would include mobilization, they'd have to build construction roads like they did for the stadium. Was close to three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, just.
Two seventy nine.
Yeah, two seventy nine. So that was more than we had, and then we and like we always do when we budget, especially with capital projects, we try to prioritize what needs to happen. So we've got the wrestling mats in the wrestling room at the middle school that are probably thirty five years old. And they desperately need replaced, that's a heavy use area. I mean, if you ever walk through there when the wrestling club is busy, it's it's just, I mean, it's it's great, just wall to wall parents, but you know, heavy heavily used. And and then the same thing with the mats that the team uses at Seneca and the Seneca Gym, those are very old and they need replaced. So those things seemed to take precedence over. The batting cage when when we talked with the admin team about, you know, what order do we tackle these things in? And then we were looking at what we've allocated for pavement and concrete work because that's just a constant annual battle. And we know that about nine years ago, we repaved the whole campus, we've been selectively hitting areas. But we're to the point now where, you know, that the whole project, we need to start looking at it in bigger sections at one time. Uh so we might do the entire front of the middle school instead of just redo a a heavy path or an area. So we know those those needs are greater, uh so that was the rationale be between recommending. This commitment at that this, you know, at this time, so we can address those needs sooner rather than later. I don't, I mean, the the discus area and the batting tunnels are important. And I don't think it's never for those, but right now, I I think in queue wise, we feel like they're. Uh not where these other needs are at the moment.
And do we go back to the requesters and explain to them like what we're doing, this was prioritized before that engages them? You know, discuss, just so they understand the con- the whole.
Correct, um and it doesn't mean that we can't help them make improvements to what's already started in the batting area. You know, that's, we could probably do something for less, it's not ideal, but you know, if if we get involved and area gets involved. Chances are that it it will come out better and more usable. Best is the worst enemy of better, maybe we can make it better.
Right.
So that's where we're at with that.
I had a little bit of sticker shock when we got the quote.
I saw that, it was crazy.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Matson?
Not even so much a question, just putting it out there, for the paving, we know parking is a challenge up there, getting in there, so that drive up. And I don't know if we can expand a little bit on the paving, cuz all the cars park right up and down that road.
Just have no parking signs there.
They won't. They say, we say don't park on the grass, and they tear that grass up, and it's a mud hole.
Are you talking about the drive from the high school up to the elementary school?
No, up to the concessions and the fields.
Stick tracks to the field. Oh, okay.
Along that, they're looped.
Yeah, they park on both sides even where that stop sign is.
In front of the dip and block or?
Well, they're parked there right now.
Either putting something, yeah.
They drove right by.
I mean, it's just a thought or put signs up.
I think it doesn't matter how wide you make it. They're gonna.
They're gonna park there regardless, so that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, guardrails, guardrails are not that expensive, that might be the. The answer, but you just have to make sure there's adequate, cuz anytime you move a parking around, then. Anticipate.
Or or can you put like a stone, a stone edging like a berm instead? So you don't have a guardrail, but you let you let the you let the one tire sit on the stone edge. And the other tire sits on the edge of the asphalt, and that way you're not blocking it with a with a thought.
Yeah, we can look at those.
There's, yeah, there's lots, lots of options.
Mr. Bendig, going back to the finance uh committee meeting, um so you had talked about the three point three nine being our average uh for the last six years. And e- explained what the impact to the taxpayer would be uh roughly uh on that increase, would that number? Close our current four hundred plus thousand dollar gap or?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just had a couple, if I can, uh camp onto that, the the financing, so a few just comments for me, as I was looking through the uh expenditure spreadsheet. In general, most items, year over year, increased between five and nine percent, at least as a summary uh category. The one item that jumped out of me seemed to be the uh Division Three Professional Services looks like. And the one item was educational agencies, and we jumped a hundred and twenty thousand in that from year over year, I guess I just didn't know what that was, was that in the in the summary? But I didn't know what executive agencies that would have been, educational agencies. Which that that category jumped seventeen percent year over year, the other ones were nine percent, one was a minus. And then the other question I have is, yeah, about the budgetary reserve, but I just didn't know what educational agencies, three twenty three is your role, yeah, right there. One sixty two versus one two, one four, or forty two last year.
I have some. Into the weeds, maybe gritty stuff, so I can.
Yeah, I just didn't know what that, why that one jumped so high.
So that is. The addition of the refocus rooms.
Okay.
So last year or these years, it has been covered by Ester funds.
Got it.
So it's not in the budget.
Now we have to pay for, yes.
Now we're putting it in the budget.
Okay, so that's why that category jumped seventeen, and then on the the uh category eight, the budgetary reserve category essentially. Why wouldn't charter school tuition, instead of being in the budgetary reserve, why wouldn't that be in one of the other categories, I'm just asking?
So if you remember.
It's a good question for that, that's a good question, and there's a good reason for it.
So.
I don't remember, so that's why I ask.
I'm gonna remind you.
Please.
So. Every year, I am required to report our ex- our budgeted expenditures on a calculation. To calculate what our district's tuition charter. Charter school tuition is for a regular ed student and a special ed student. So there is a specific form and Excel spreadsheet where I have to plug numbers in. There are exclusions from our budgeted amount for those things, like. For regular ed, special ed is excluded, any federal expenditures in any category for instructional purposes is excluded.
So that's why they don't show up in here.
Budgetary reserve is excluded. So if I put nine hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
Okay.
Into an area that isn't excluded, those dollars count towards our. Per pupil cost.
Okay.
That then jacks up the tuition that we have to then pay on someone who chooses not to come to our school.
I like. Good move.
You're welcome.
We call it the legal show.
I might, I I that's why accountants are magicians, them and electricians, I I like them as well.
So when I realized that budgetary reserve was excluded.
Yeah.
I can't see, I can't see a good reason why we would wanna put nine hundred thousand dollars into a budget that's gonna drive our tuition cost up for people that were not educated.
Absolutely, absolutely right, yeah, correct. And then just as, just as a comment for the for the board, I mean, I, looking at your financial projections, you're, you know, look with your look back, six, eight years or so, or six years looks like. In general, uh from that time period, just about everything has jumped, I mean, our our revenue, I saw jumped. Overall sixteen percent in those last six years, just straight numbers, but our expenses has jumped seventeen percent. Which equates to real close to what our budgetary um shortfall is in the current year, it's about a percent and a half or so. So that's just an observation for me that says. And maybe this is obvious to everyone else, but I needed to do it for myself, we just seem to have a structural deficit as we continue to go forward.
Absolutely.
I mean, that that's unfortunately, I'm sure, the majority of that is in that um charter school tuition side of things.
It's, yeah, those are good observations, it's the charters, it's the cyber charter bill, it's health insurance.
Sure.
Uh it's it's the retirement system, um contributions, those are three really huge drivers.
But I mean, for in that case, I mean, again, using those, the Division One and the Division Two, which is kind of the, I'll call it the personnel expenditures. I mean, they're a reasonable five, four, five percent year over year, that doesn't seem too bad to me, you you know.
The board historically with settlements, we've done what we can to limit.
Right.
The salary increases, um they're they're right around CPI.
Right, which again is pretty financially uh astute to to keep that under wraps.
Yeah, we we've been trying to control what we control, it's the uncontrollables that, yeah.
And that's why it's just easy for me to summarize these things into big chunks, and that it helps me get my head wrapped around it, so.
Ms. Heatherington, you had a question? Ms. Heatherington, you still have a question?
I do, I have one quick question, settle down.
No problem.
Um, okay, so in the property tax, the seventy seven thousand, which was, we got through appeals, reassessing property that was purchased. This year and some years previous, so are you projecting it'll be less next year because we're not able to go back however many?
So a portion of of that seventy seven thousand is from the appeals, I would say that some of it is from general. Somebody built a pole barn on their property, somebody put an addition on their home, so their assessed value went from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand, which then just. Times our millage increases their property taxes, so the interim cost, or people move in or out of their home, you know, move in or move out. At at that time, the assessment can change, it doesn't usually unless we appeal it.
Are you expecting that number to be about the same next year?
So you can see historically, it's kind of, we always get some portion of an increase. But from twenty one, twenty two to twenty two, twenty three, it only went point up point zero two seven percent. But this year it went up point six four percent, so I I believe that a lot of that is based on the appeal process, so again. So again, this year, we will start the appeal process for any sales that have happened since June thirtieth to see how, where that falls, if there's anything worth pursuing there to try and continue to.
I guess that was my question. Was it worth it?
So every little bit of assessment always helps because it's, it's an exponential multiplier from the millage. So every little bit, if you raise the millage a little bit, then it's multiplied by, it's kind of compounding.
So that seventy-seven thousand that we're getting this year will also be in there next year.
Plus. Because it resets the baseline.
Correct.
I'm, I'm coming new, Ms. Burlingham, but I just went to a training that, um, there was some talk about the fact that assessments statewide, uh, there's other areas that have sued their counties because the counties are not reassessing. It costs a lot of money for the county to do a countywide assessment and that would impact every single school district. But, uh, the scenario or the example they gave, I thought was pretty good. So, uh, if you think of the total cost of our district as a pie, it's just how that pie gets split up. Right now, that pie gets unfairly split up if some people's houses are really worth three hundred thousand and they're paying taxes on a hundred thousand dollar home. So we're just re-assessing where that pie gets cut up and how many slices it is, it is in with our appeals. It doesn't change how much money we get in, changes who pays the money that we get in, if that makes sense. Ms. Burlingham, did you have a question?
Not a question. Mine's just a, a really quick comment. I'm sorry because I'm just impelled. I wanted to say it earlier and then I sat on it. Now I'm just like, I just have to. Because with the charter school thing, I don't know how anyone figures out the money portion. I don't do money stuff. So hopefully someone figures that out. However, with, being someone who works with such vulnerable families all the time, I have to say, there are just so many families that cannot navigate a school system. Kids are not successful in school systems like this. There's many that are not. So like, I get that it's very frustrating with the amount of money that we're spending. But when you really stop and think about it, like truancy has gone down quite a bit with charter schools because honestly, some kids can't go to a school. They struggle, whether it's trauma, whether it's mental health, whether there's other, there could be religion issues. But like our truancy referrals that come through have gone down because of the fact that charter will help kids actually do a little bit more in school because they can't handle going to school for whatever reason. Um, and honestly, we would get a lot of truancy referrals and that's not a child welfare concern and people get very frustrated with C O I S because we don't deal with that as much because it's not a safety concern. But we can help families navigate that with charter schools a little bit more. But I just, I, I felt compelled just to say that because I've worked with so many families where parents actually can't even, the social anxiety, the engagement, the not even knowing how to make a scheduled appointment. How do I interact with a teacher? How do I? That stuff is super significant that sometimes some of us don't always think about how easy it is for us to make an appointment over our youth. Some families just can't do it. So I don't know. I felt like I needed to just say that sometimes it's, it's a bigger struggle than I think we think about. Unless you're really actively working with people who honestly are struggling with it every day. I was not successful in a school. I was not. I was, it was a charter school for me because I could not handle what it was like to be in a school. It was not the same for me. So just a thought. I'm sorry. I had to say it out loud and it was festering at me because it's just, that's how it is for some people, families and children.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, those are good points to make.
Yeah.
And I don't want to paint with too broad of a brush.
Yeah.
Because there, I mean, there definitely are students and families that are served.
Yes, better that way.
Better that way.
But I get that we are, there is a lot of money that's going in. So I don't know how that problem gets solved because that's clearly something that needs.
It's a political problem.
It's an issue, but yeah.
And if my contention is that that service can be provided at the same exact quality level for probable, well, we know because we did it for a fraction. You know, twenty-five thousand versus three thousand a year. So that, and, you know, that's where my beef is, is, remember the Wendy's commercial? Where's the beef? Where did it go? Like there's this huge bun and there's a little bit.
Yes.
That's the si- actual cyber cost and then there's a whole huge piece of hamburger that Executive Nick Trombetta took to buy three yachts. That's where my concern is, you know, that's taxpayers.
And that's a function of political oversight.
It is, yeah, it's way above our.
You know, auditing, et cetera, all those things that are.
Yep.
And I, and I honestly, like, I'm more savvy on what's going on in the Erie City Schools, which is a much different discussion than here in Wattsburg. So I don't know what's, you know, what's going on here in Wattsburg. So that's just more what's going on with our families in Erie, which is a much different demographic than we have going on out here, but.
Well stated.
Sorry, it's best, I'm like, I have to say it. I can't walk away. It's going to eat at me.
I agree with what you're saying and I think it's a good option for some people.
Yes.
That this doesn't work for.
Yes.
The process maybe in the. Yes, the funding stream.
The funding. The funding, yes, yes, yes.
Well, it's the equivalency, equivalency of the cost.
Mr. President?
A couple of final comments regarding our annual structural deficit. You know, we need to be reminded that the structural deficit is driven by unfunded mandates. One in particular is the retirement system for P S ers. We do negotiate salaries and healthcare and we do the best that we can to keep those in check. But we have to pay our people. We have to be competitive to get the best teachers that we can. But, you know, if you look at P S ers and charter school tuition, that's, that's about a big chunk of our structural deficit. And then if you look further to see what the index is combined with your charter school payment for most districts, that just about equals our structural deficit. So if we could address those two things, we would not have to be having such conversations that we do.
Agreed.
Thank you.
To your point and to Mr. Morve's, you know, it's really enlightening to see eight hundred thousand that we're going to get in projected revenue increase without a tax increase. Like, that's a lot of extra money. The problem is we need one point two million extra, so there's the math conundrum, so. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig, again, and.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. So Melissa Kingen, our regional manager from the Nutrition Group, will be here next week to give a presentation about the item that's on the agenda. She had a conference. It couldn't be here tonight, so she will be here next week to present that and talk about the budget and what we need to do to right-size our staff to continue to provide excellent quality service. And increased food costs have been, have been painful. So she'll be here next week to talk about that.
Thank you. I hear you. No other questions? Those items under finance will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for building your grounds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have anything to report for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. The chair recognizes Ms. Nicole Lee for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, next week I will have eight items for consideration. They include P one substitute additions, P two personnel substitute list, P three resignations, P four leave requests, P five appointments, P six conference requests, P seven summer remediation appointments, P eight extended year appointments, and that is it.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on the items under personnel?
Mr. President, uh.
Mr. Morve.
Under appointments, uh, just as, as a personal, I, we did hire a middle school track coach and I thought that person might be on the appointment list for the agenda. Maybe it'll be in.
It's under the seminoide for athletics and extracurricular.
Oh, it's in that section. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Not under appointments.
Hearing no.
Thank you.
Hearing no other question, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Chair recognizes Mr. and Ms. Amanda Farrell for policy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do have several items for next week. So I would like to move all of the policies listed below under P one for the first reading to the agenda for next week, please.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under policy?
Uh, one comment, but when we get to the second reading, um, next, next month in May, we, we will add a motion to rescind policy two fifty-five because it's being absorbed into two fifty-one.
Okay.
But that's the official action that the board would have to take. Once the new policy is approved, then we can formally rescind that policy.
Okay, thank you. I hear you. No questions. Uh, that, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. The chair recognizes Dr. Andy Pushak for curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items for the board's consideration next week. C one, language instructional education program services contract. C two, language instructional consultative languages instruction supervisory services. C three, approval of academic services. And C four, the special ed program. Those four items for next week, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under curriculum? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Dr. Pushak.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Ms. Lee Heatherington for technology.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. As of yet, I will have nothing for the agenda next week.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. Chair recognizes Ms. Brittany Burlingham for transportation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will have one item under transportation next week. One can be T one transportation request to approve the transportation request and rapidization of field trips since the last meeting as outlined. And that'll be it as of now.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the one item under transportation? Hearing none, that item will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Burlingham. The chair recognizes Ms. Tara Pound for athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you. Uh, three items for next week. A E one volunteer list, A E two athletic resignation, and A E three athletic appointment.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on those items under athletic and extracurricular? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Uh, there's one item on the agenda under miscellaneous for next week. Thought I saw it. There it is. Uh, M one, the Ketter Media Agreement to approve the agreement between Ketter Media and the Westbury Area School District for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, whose letter production as outlined. Is there any question on that item under miscellaneous? This is, how often? Three times?
Three times a year. Yeah, so we do a back to school, uh, at the end of August and then we do one right before the holiday break in December. Try to capture the fall and then we'll do a third one, usually the first or second week of June. I try to hold that one off in case there's any late student accomplishment, especially in athletics, you know, where the playoffs go. That's not always possible that, but at some point we have to send it to the printer.
Hearing no other questions, that item will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Uh, next week will we have an Erie County Technical School report, Mr. Morve?
Yes, Mr. President, that will be a summary of the March Technical, the school board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Morve. And Dr. Pushak, will we have a Northwest Area Media Unit report? Thank you. Uh, that brings us to board correspondence and dialogue. Anything from the board this evening? Uh, we will be meeting, uh, in executive session following this meeting for a review of negotiations with our local two unit. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will Pushak.
Nicole second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.